Wednesday, October 11th, 2017. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I will ask the Secretary to please call the roll.
Chairman Bray is present. Commissioner Keys is present. Commissioner Maloney is present. Commissioner Walters is present. Commissioner Steiner is present. Commissioner Kish is absent, and Vice Chairman Barnes is absent. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Can I please get a motion for Commissioner Kish and Commissioner Barnes to be excused?
Okay, a motion to excuse Commissioner Kish and Commissioner Barnes from today's meeting.
It has been moved by Commissioner Keys, seconded by Commissioner Maloney, to excuse the two commissioners. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. At this point in time, the minutes have been provided, and I will take a motion to approve the minutes from September 13th, 2017.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Steiner, seconded by Commissioner Walters. Is there any discussion on the minutes or any amendments? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Now it's time for the citizens who'd like to address the Planning and Zoning Committee on any non-agenda items. Do we have any speakers' cards or any items that someone would like to address? Seeing none, we'll move on to item number six. This is disclosure of ex parte communication by any of the commission members here tonight. Is there anyone that would like to disclose anything at this time?
No.
Yep. We have no old business on this evening's agenda. We'll move right into new business. And we will start with item 8.1. This is preliminary plat for vistas at Palm Valley. And Joe is here to present tonight. Welcome, Joe.
All right. What am I doing wrong? Got to get the right buttons. Apologize for that. So this is the preliminary plat for the vistas at Palm Valley. It's located at the southwest corner of Litchfield Road and Palm Valley Boulevard. It consists of about fifty-three and a half acres, which was, is currently occupied by a portion of the Palm Valley Golf Club. Golf course holes in the former driving range. The adjacent land uses around the property consist of single-family homes in the golf course to the north, single-family homes in the golf course and multifamily to the east, and also to the east along the southern, our parcel B, our restaurants and hotels. There's office and school uses in the south, and single-family homes in Camelot Golf Course and Palm Valley Community Center to the west. All right, I got it now. The existing zoning of the property was approved by the City Council on August 28th of this year for the vistas at Palm Valley Final PAD. Parcel A is zoned for urban residential low density, and a small portion is for urban residential medium density with an open space buffer along the south boundary. Parcel B is zoned urban residential medium density and also has a open space buffer along the south boundary as part of the PAD. Parcel, the preliminary plat for parcel A consists of eighty-six single-family detached home lots. And the lot size minimum is sixty by one-twenty. The urban residential medium density parcel, which is right here by the entryway, is zoned urban residential medium density and will have five attached single-family units in a duplex and a triplex structure as part of a model home complex. As likewise, there's an open space buffer along the the south boundary of the property to separate it from the commercial to the south. The total number of units in parcel A would be ninety-one, and that was, have a density of 2.77 dwelling units per acre. This is not likely. Alloting plan for parcel A is, covers the air, four holes of the lake's golf course, the putting green and the lake, and a restroom building which will be removed. The remaining fourteen holes of the golf course will be reconfigured as a nine-hole championship course. The existing cart path that passes through the property now will be relocated along the south boundary of parcel A. Homes are limited to single-story floor plans along Litchfield Road and Palm Valley Boulevard, and also in other portions of the development, which I'll describe in parcel B. One duplex structure, one triplex structure will be on these lots at the entrance as part of the model home complex. And then a quarter-acre tot lot is planned near the center of the parcel A, and an additional turf area has been added along the south boundary between lots thirty and thirty-one. The preliminary plat for parcel B anticipates twenty-eight single-family duplex units on lots that are rain, are about forty-seven by one-oh-six, and seventy-eight single-family attached triplex units on lots that are thirty-six by one-oh-six and up to forty-seven by one-oh-six. There's a, as I noted before, there's a thirty-foot open space buffer along the east-south boundary of the property. Total number of units will be a hundred and six, and that is a density of 5.13 units per acre, which is consistent with the urban residential medium density zoning for the property. The golf driving range poles and netting will be removed except for three poles at the southwest corner of the site. That's noted on the landscape plan. They will continue to be used for the existing wireless communication facilities that are located there on tract S. The duplexes will be single-story with two elevations. The triplexes will have single-story units on each end and a two-story unit in the middle. Lots along the west boundary of this parcel and several of the lots along the east boundary are limited to single-story. There's a half-acre tot lot planned within this part of the project, which is across from the secondary entrance that comes in from Litchfield Road. There are ten-foot wide, sorry about that, ten-foot wide accessways that are behind the lots to provide access to the middle unit of the triplex structures. Water and sewer will be provided by Liberty Utilities. The fire department's primary response will be from station number 183 at Litchfield and Avalon, which is only two to three minutes away. Project's located within an existing police patrol area and is on the edge of the territory within the vicinity of a military airport and within the traffic pattern airspace for Phoenix Goodyear Airport. However, no adverse impacts are expected and standard disclosure statements are required. In terms of access, it'll be a gated community with private streets. Parcel A will have a standard street section, but parcel B will have a reduced street section and parking will be restricted to one side of the street. The golf cart where it passes across the street in the development will be marked and signed and constructed with alternate pavement materials. Primary access will be through a main gate off of Palm Valley Boulevard. And then a secondary access will be from Litchfield Road through a private access easement to parcel B between Hampton Inn and the Macaroni Grill. Traffic improvements that are likely to be needed at the intersection of that driveway and the Litchfield Road include a traffic signal at a future time when it's warranted. The developers participating at sixteen percent of that cost. There will be restriping of the private driveway and installation of a right-turn D-cell lane for southbound traffic on Litchfield Road. As I noted, the project has a couple tot lots with shade structures and turf play area. Overall, the project has thirteen-plus acres of open space, which is about twenty-five percent of the site. Pedestrian access is provided through the site and to Litchfield Road. The phasing plan for the project will, is shown in this exhibit. The tan area is phase one and the phase two is the pink area. Parcels A and B will be mass graded at this, both at the same time, but only a portion will be fully developed with the first phase. However, all the improvements along Palm Valley Boulevard and Litchfield Road will be installed with phase one, including landscaping and the perimeter theme wall. The relocated golf cart path will be also done with phase one, even though it is, goes through a portion of phase two. Utilities will be extended through parcel B and through phase two to serve the phase one development. And both the main access and secondary access roads will be developed in phase one, as well as the recreational amenities. The tot lots will be built in phase one. So that concludes my presentation. The staff recommendation to the planning commission is to recommend to the City Council approval of the preliminary plat for the vistas at the Palm Valley, subdividing fifty-three acres into eighty-six single-family lots and one-hundred-and-eleven duplex, triplex lots subject to the sixteen stipulations contained in the staff report.
Thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Is there any questions for Joe?
I have just a quick one.
Commissioner Maloney?
Joe, where on the parcel B, where did you say the triplexes are? The duplexes and triplexes are?
On parcel B, Commissioner Maloney, parcel B will have duplexes and triplexes scattered throughout the parcel. Primarily along the west boundary will be duplexes because that's restricted to single-story construction. But then in the interior of the development, you'll have triplexes, unfortunately, all of these, all of these lots. And then there's a single-story restriction over here, which will be just duplexes. There'll be fourteen duplex structures for twenty-eight units. And then seventy-eight triplex units of item I three, something. I had it figured out earlier today, but...
No, that's okay. Just, I was just curious where they were. And down below that, it's real south of that, that's where the homes are? Or is this all, that whole area is triplexes and duplexes? Parcel B?
Chairman Bray, Commissioner Maloney, parcel A is all single-family detached.
Okay.
Parcel B is a combination of duplex and triplex, but I would say probably more triplex than duplex.
Any other questions?
I have...
Commissioner Walters?
Joe, thank you for the presentation. The tot parks have me thinking about the children and the school buses and things like that. Do you know at this time where the school bus will drop off? As someone who's lived in a gated community for many years, I know that the school buses don't come through the gate and through the neighborhoods. And so particularly during hot times, which is a lot of the time here, parents will drive to the gate and park there in their minivans and whatnot. And that can impede the gated entry, especially where you have it is here where the ingress doesn't have a bump out to get around. So do you know at this time what that plan will be?
Chairman Bray, Commissioner Walters, to the best of my knowledge, the developer's been working with the school district to create a drop-off pickup area at the entrance to the site. And so that would likely occur at the Palm Valley Boulevard entrance. But that's about the most I know about it at this point.
That'll be something...
The applicant could perhaps elaborate on it if you'd like.
Thank you. That'll be something of concern to me. I'm pleased that you're looking at it, and I'll be looking at that closely when it comes back.
Commissioner Keys?
Yeah, just a question about the relocated golf cart path. Was there any comments or feedback from the community on that golf cart path and how it impacts the surrounding community? I mean, when you don't have a golf cart path by your house or around your house or so forth, and then all of a sudden there's going to be a new one, that is traffic. Was there any feedback from any of the residents in the area about this?
Chairman Bray, Commissioner Keys, the cart path runs through the site now, but of course, these are golf course holes. So the cart path comes underneath Litchfield Road, and then it's going to come down to the south and go along...
So it's not going to impact any neighborhoods that...
No.
Around that area?
When it comes out, it's actually going to hook back into the existing cart path. So none of the existing homes would be affected by that.
Great. Thank you.
Commissioner Steiner?
Yeah, my question kind of follows up on Commissioner Keys. And the cart path, is this, is there, is the property going to be walled in in the back? Or is this cart path going to be running right by the backyard where it's totally visible to everybody's property?
Chairman Bray, Commissioner Steiner, the, there'll be a combination of perimeter walls and partial view fences around the backs of the lots. So the cart path will not be infringing on the privacy of the adjacent properties.
See, that would be the question, the privacy, and whether they're going to have it or they're not going to have it in their backyard.
In the agenda packet, there is a drawing that shows where the view walls and theme walls will be installed. And along the cart path is a combination of view wall, theme walls, but perimeter walls to separate that from the residents.
Okay. My second question is, I know recently we've reduced our lot sizes in the back down to forty-five.
Now, we have...
I don't know if there's an exception to the rule, and, you know, kind of educate me on this if there is. We were looking at thirty-six feet. Explain why it's nine feet different from the forty-five.
Okay, I'd be glad to. Chairman Bray, Commissioner Steiner, the reduced lot size is being used on the attached product. The single-family detached product in this development in parcel A at the north will have a minimum of sixty feet wide by one-twenty for the single-family detached. The forty-fives that have been discussed more recently have been talked about in the context of detached, single-family. And as the lots get smaller, attaching units actually, there's an advantage to that in terms of lot size. The thirty-six-foot wide lot is the one in the middle of the triplex. And then on the outsides, those will typically be forty-seven.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
One more question about the golf cart path. Is that, will that be, can people, can anybody use that golf cart path? Or is that just for the golfers? Can anybody in this part of the community use that?
Chairman Bray, Commissioner Maloney, that's a good question. It will be open to the development, residents within the development and golf carts. Once the cart path leaves the development and gets back onto the golf course at the west side of the project, it'll be signed and marked to indicate that that is not for public use and that people are restricted from going that way. But they can use the cart path to take it back to Litchfield Road or to connect to some of the other paths in the development.
Any further questions for Joe? Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
I see Ed is in the audience.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that applicant's going to be representative of Mr. Ron Hilgarth.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wilson, oh, that's fine.
I'm on the, I'm on the wrong one.
I should have thrown it to them.
Thank you. The applicant is here. Would the applicant like to address the commission or answer any questions specifically?
Actually, Eric Montgomery with Meritage Homes. Thank you for having us tonight. And I'll address any questions you might have. And would say that we are happy to agree with all the stipulations that Joe has mentioned previously.
Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Keys?
Yeah, school districts. It just says here that an offline agreement on voluntary financial contribution. You know, all this has not been completed. Where does that stand?
We do not have a signed agreement with the, with the school district. We have had several conversations over many months as the progress of the, of the community has gone forward. We think we have a, we're at a final number with, with the school district that we will have an agreement. Frankly, it's a little bit higher than we, we would like, but we've built that into the project. And we will probably be inking a deal with them within the next thirty days, I would imagine.
Can you give some insight into what some of the concerns are during these conversations with the school district? I mean, as a substitute teacher in the Litchfield Public School District, the schools are at capacity.
Sure.
So I'm like, oh, this is interesting.
I wouldn't say that, the concerns we have are, we obviously develop all over the valley, and municipalities and school districts have different school agreement-type fees that go with them. And they run the range from a few hundred dollars a house to, in this case, we're probably going to sign an agreement that's around fifteen hundred dollars per house. So it's at the very high end of what we pay in the valley. And so we have to do our due diligence to make sure that, that makes sense. And I think that's probably where we're going to end up. But that's, that's the only, we've had a lot of turnover in some of our forward planning positions in the last six months. And that has also hampered as we restart those talks with the school district. But there's no, there's no effort on our part not to, to sign that agreement. It's just, it's inevitable, and it will probably be happening in the next thirty days.
Questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate it. With that, I will take a motion on the plat for vistas at the Palm, at Palm Valley.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to propose that we pass I second that.
It's been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Keys to approve the preliminary plat for vistas at Palm Valley. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We will move into agenda item 8.2. This is the preliminary plat for Estrella Commons. And Steve will be presenting on this one. Welcome, Steve.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commission Members. This is the preliminary plat for Estrella Commons. This PAD, originally approved in 2006, and that basically is this area here. And this is the multifamily piece that the commission looked at just this last month. That was right here. But tonight, we're looking at this portion right here. It's about a hundred and five acres. Zoning for this area was changed in 2015 to allow single-family development in this parcel here. And so that's what is the plan for tonight. Preliminary plat for single-family. We had a plat approved last year in 2016 for single-family development. But with a new developer on board, they decided to redesign the site, and therefore, we have a new application tonight. Surrounding this area, we have Bullard Wash here, Ranch O'Mirage to the south, future multifamily here. We have some commercial here along both sides of Van Buren, and then up, future multifamily piece here to the west. And a piece within Estrella Commons as a district, that's that mixed-use area. We have a commercial and residential within this area. Again, it's about a hundred and five acres. The plan is for four-hundred-and-twenty-nine lots. And this is the layout for the subdivision. There'll be three points of access. We'll have Roosevelt, Fillmore here, and then a connection through Ranch O'Mirage at 151st. All streets within this subdivision will be public. Density's about four dwelling units per acre. About seventeen percent of the project area is open space. It's about eighteen acres. Two main parks within this development. About two and a half acres each park. We have a park here in the north half, and then another park here in the south half. And they'll have sports courts, ramadas, tot lots for the residents to use. There'll also be connections to, they'll provide for future connections to the Bullard Wash along several points here. They're also making accommodations, knowing that there was that district piece here to the west. They'll also have accommodations to punch in access here and here. Once they know what development is occurring, they'll have accommodations to provide access to the site. Typical lot sizes, we have two of them. Fifty feet wide by one-hundred-and-fifteen deep, and then sixty by one-twenty. And again, Fulton Homes is the intended developer for this plat. We have reviewed the preliminary plat. We do find it is consistent with the Estrella Commons PAD. We do find it is consistent with the city's development regulations. As such, we are recommending approval subject to those thirteen stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. Staff is available for questions, as is the applicant.
Thank you, Steve. I appreciate it. Is there any questions for Steve at this time? Yes, Commissioner Steiner?
All right. Steve, you've got four-hundred-and-twenty-nine single-family homes going in on this property. And the one thing that concerns me is that we only have two accessways into the property and out. Is that enough?
Mr. Chair, Commission Members, yes, it is in terms of the analysis that was conducted with the traffic study for this development. It was a requirement for this preliminary plat. So it was something that was looked at. There will be improvements to both those streets, to Roosevelt and to Fillmore, that they will be designed to accommodate the traffic going in and out of the subdivision. There's also that third point to the south that should someone want to go through Van Buren, they'll have an opening, a median break there that they can use to make full turn and movements. But yes, sir, they have looked at it and deemed it adequate.
Okay. My second question would be on the wall. That is the sound wall that's going to be put up by I-10. How far from I-10 will that wall be?
Mr. Chairman, Commission Members, I do not know the exact distance. It will be built, if the last study I looked at, it'll be built along this north line here, about eighty feet north of these lots here. So you have this buffer area here, the sound wall, and then the freeway. If, Mr. Chair, the applicant may know the exact number needed.
Okay, so I-10, you would actually be here, and the wall will be down here. So what would be the sound prevention of the wall? What good would it be?
Mr. Chair, Commission Members, they did do a sound study for this development initially, and they'll also, per stipulation, have to look at it again. But that was determined to be the height about, it's generally about twenty feet high in the last study I looked at. It may change in the future. But it was about twenty feet high. They determined that was the height needed when they did their sensors. That was the height needed to protect the residents.
Yeah, I looked at the one next to the Walmart on the west side of Estrella Parkway. And is that what this one is going to be, basically?
Good question. I do not know if that's the same height. I don't know the...
Twenty feet, kind of, that sold me right there. But I'm just, I was just curious if it's going to be very much like the one on the west side.
You'll look into that, obviously, Steve.
Mr. Chairman, no, that's a good question. I will find that and update my staff report.
Perfect. I appreciate that. Is there any other questions for Steve? Commissioner Steiner, maybe we'll have, see if the applicant can address your concern. The applicant is here. Come forward, Ed. If you want to just jump right to the question, and if you have anything, you can add to Steve's comments. That would be appreciated.
Thank you. Ed Bull, 702 East Osburn, here on behalf of Fulton Homes. In fact, Norm Nichols, who's the president of Fulton Homes, is here with me, as is Brian Nichols from EPS Engineering. With respect to the freeway wall and the location of the wall and proximity... With respect to the freeway wall and the location of the wall and proximity to the travel lanes and height and so on and so forth, it is approximately, from the outside travel lane to the wall is approximately 80 to 85 feet. And then from the wall to the nearest home is another 80 feet. So that you have the travel lanes about 80 feet to the property line, then the freeway wall, and then per the zoning approval previously, this 80-foot corridor is heavily landscaped. So it's approximately 160 to 165 feet from the travel lane to the backyards of the closest home with heavy landscaping in there. The height of the wall, I agree with Steve, it's been, I could have cited the zoning, the, the wall study to you back during the zoning case, but from memory, it, it varies in height, but it is approximately 20 feet in height. And then there's also, it, it doesn't just run parallel to the freeway. There's also what I'll call a wing wall that comes a little bit down the east property line and a wing wall that comes a little bit down the south prop, or the west property line. I personally can't speak to the height of the wall proximate to Walmart. What I'm accustomed to is that we have lower walls adjacent to commercial development than we do adjacent to residential. But as Steve indicated, this is something that was studied in great detail back in the zoning case and actually, again, when we worked on a preliminary plat here a couple of years ago, and we're just picking up and running over the ball from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant? Appreciate it, Ed.
Thank you. We request your approval.
Thank you. I think that might be your shortest time at the podium there, Ed. Always good to see you. With that, I will take a motion on the preliminary plat for Astrea Commons.
Mr. Chairman, I move that this commission approve case number 17-500-00007, subject to the stipulations in the report.
I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Maloney to approve the preliminary plat for Astrea Commons. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 8.3, this is the zoning ordinance text amendment, off-street parking and loading. And Karen will present on this, and with that, I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Commissioners. The current industrial parking requirements for manufacturing, assembly, and processing are one space per 600 square feet of floor area. For warehouses that are less than 200,000 square feet, it's one space per 900 square feet of floor area. And then for the larger warehouses and distribution facilities greater than 200,000, it's one space per 2,000 square feet of floor area. The current requirements are based on what we have found to be an outdated theory that as the buildings get bigger, the number of employees increases proportionally. We've found, actually, today's reality is that the larger buildings are larger because they have bigger warehouses and, and there's fewer employees in those warehouses. And the businesses are typically becoming more automated. So again, fewer employees. In our research of other cities, we found other cities have already updated their parking requirements to, to meet today's reality. So this is what we were proposing, one set of requirements for all manufacturing, assembly, and processing, and for the warehouse and distribution as well. We'll start out with one space per 1,000 square feet for the first 10,000 square feet of the building, plus one space per 5,000 square feet for the remaining floor area of the building. And then we are also having a parking requirement for the office area, which is where most of the people can be, that reflects our office parking requirement for just general office buildings. We are also proposing an additional allowance for known users when a Dick's Sporting Goods comes in or an REI comes in. If they can demonstrate to us that our parking requirements, these new parking requirements, if they don't need all that parking and they can show on a site plan where it could be met should the user change, and they can demonstrate how the drainage for the parking can be accommodated on that site plan, then they only need to put in what they need. There's, there's no point in having all this additional pavement if it truly isn't needed. And really, our goal in doing this is, is to provide maximum opportunity for industrial businesses to come to the city and locate, and we think ensuring that we're also minimizing any impacts. And staff is recommending approval of the staff-initiated amendment, and we hope that you would do so as well.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any questions for Karen at this time? Commissioner Steiner.
What percent reduction in parking are we talking about with the new amendment as opposed to the old? Have we looked at, is it 33%? Is it 50%?
Chairman Bray, Commissioner Steiner, I'm, I have not figured that out. I'm sorry. It will be a significant reduction in parking, but I will, I will calculate that and get back to you and include it in my staff report to council.
Now, the second question is, the, what if this, any of the buildings come in, the warehouses, what if they want to expand? Then what do they do about parking? Because if we follow the equations that you've laid out, where are they going to put the parking?
They, they, they would have to provide additional parking. The assumption would be that they would either buy an additional piece of property adjacent to where they have already built, or a lot of them come in and they start out with a bigger piece of property and build the first phase of their development, the first phase of the building, and there's typically extra land on that same lot. But if they build more building, they would need to meet the, the code requirements for that additional building.
They would buy the land upfront and then develop it as they move along?
A lot of them do. We have found that. Dick's Sporting Goods did that, bought a, a much larger piece of property so that they have room already for future expansion.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Karen.
Any other questions for Karen? Is this a, just out of curiosity, Karen, was this a staff-driven deal or was there applicants that had concerns about our regulations?
Well, specifically on Dick's Sporting Goods and REI, when they came in and talked to us and looked at our parking requirements, they said, you know, we don't need this much. We really don't. And they explained to us the reasonings why, the large warehouse, the automation, the conveyor systems that take up so much of the building, but it's not people there. And, and we worked with them to do something very similar to what we're proposing in here. We said, okay, if that's the case for you, just show us where on your site you could put that parking, and they did that. So should they move out and another user come in who needs it, we, we know there's room for it. So it, it was, you know, an effort to work with the business community and what their current needs are.
I think that's excellent. You, the staff is to be commended. I think that's a great way to think through a problem and find a solution, so, thank you, Karen. With that, I will close the public hearing. Unless you have a card. And I will take a motion on agenda item 8.3.
Mr. Chairman, I propose that we pass the zoning ordinance text amendment, off-street parking and loading, number 17-220-00007.
I second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Maloney, seconded by Commissioner Keys to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment, off-street parking and loading. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Onto item 8.4. This is the zoning ordinance text amendment, industrial districts, and it is also being presented by Karen this evening, and I will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The current industrial district standards for dock doors are the result of a 2016 staff-initiated zoning ordinance text amendment. And again, this was following inquiries from the industrial business community that we made that change. And in that, we allowed loading, delivery, and roll-up dock doors to front on a public street, provided that public street was not an arterial and that certain screening requirements be met. Then just in 2017, an amendment was requested and approved to the Goodyear Crossing Industrial Park PAD. And Goodyear Crossing is where Amazon and Macy's and Bloomingdale's is. In that amendment, it allowed the dock doors to front on Cotton Lane, which is a designated scenic arterial. And staff recommended approval because with the staff-initiated amendment in 2016, one of the screening requirements was that they have a double row of 24-inch box trees. With this proposal to have the dock doors fronting on an arterial, we suggested, and the commission and the council supported, that the second row of trees be 36-inch box. We thought that that would provide more screening right from the start, and thereby it, it would be better suited for the arterial streets. The amendment for Goodyear Crossing also allowed 65-foot silos to be with a building that required that for their business. And we have actually found that several of the industrial businesses that have looked at locating in the city, that's kind of a normal accessory use for industrial businesses, for them to have silos for, one at the old Rubbermaid Building has plastic pallets that are stored in these silos, and then they're routed into the building for their manufacturing process. So we found that to be, be very normal in current industrial businesses. So in both of these things happening, the zone, the text amendment, the staff-initiated, the PAD amendment, we thought about it and we thought, you know, these, these roll-up dock doors probably could front on all public streets. But with these criteria, that there not be any planned residential use or existing residential use within 500 feet, that the dock doors only occupy 50% of the building that faces the street, that they be screened by a two-foot wall and a six-foot berm or an eight-foot wall, and that the, for the normal streets, for the standard streets, the two rows of 24-inch box, and for the scenic arterials, the second row being the 36-inch box. We also determined that the silos could be a, a standard permitted accessory use for the industrial businesses. But again, they should be painted to match the building, and they should be located to the side and the rear of the building. So once again, the, the goal of this text amendment is, is to provide that opportunity for the industrial businesses, and we think we've, we've put in screening requirements that, that ensures minimal impacts of that. So once again, we're recommending approval and we ask that you do so as well.
Thank you, Karen. Is there any questions for Karen? Seeing none, I will, maybe? Okay. With that, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for a motion on the zoning ordinance text amendment.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission approve case number 17-220-00008.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Walters, seconded by Commissioner Steiner, to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment, industrial districts. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item 8.5, this is the zoning ordinance text amendment, residential district updates, and Katie will be presenting on this, and I will open the public hearing.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'll present from here because I don't have a formal presentation. We are actually asking for you to continue this item, so the public hearing is open. We'd ask that you take a vote to continue it to the next meeting. And the reason is just, we're still working on it. We're dotting the i's, crossing the t's. We had a request from the Home Builders Association to hold a workshop to walk the home building community through the changes, and we had a lot of great comments and feedback, which is wonderful because that gives us the opportunity now to make sure, is this stuff making sense? Are you going to be able to follow it? Are we going to be able to follow it? We even had some professional designers who went through it and gave us some suggestions on how to require better quality design. So it was really successful, but, so that's why we're asking for some additional time, just so we can clean it up and bring you a even better product. So we're anticipating that to be ready for November 8th.
Thank you, Katie. I appreciate it. So at this time, what I'd ask is a motion to continue this agenda item to the November 8th meeting.
I second.
I need the motion.
Oh, you need a, oh, I thought you were motioning. I'm sorry. I have a motion to continue this action, 17-220-00006, zoning ordinance text amendment, residential district update till the November 8th meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Keys, seconded by Commissioner Walters, to continue this public hearing to the November 8, 2016 meeting. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Agenda item number nine is staff communication.
Thank you, Chairman. To give you some updates on the cases from last meeting, the Goodyear 10 rezone, which was the industrial rezoning on McDowell Road, was approved by council, as was the P D, P D amendment to Las Ventanas, which was regarding those traffic signal stipulations. And then the Federico's use permit was approved. The Astrea Commons P D amendment for the multifamily project's been continued to the October 23rd meeting. We just had, it, it wasn't because of any resident concern, there was just a few items that needed to get tweaked regarding the legal descriptions, so very technical items. So council has not heard that one yet. Other than that, our next meeting is November 8th. I have no other communications.
Thank you, Katie. With that, I think this meeting is adjourned.